Hello to the village and hello to the village board. I'm calling this meeting to order at seven o'clock now on January third, two thousand and twenty-two. Could I do a roll call participants, please? Trustee Corrigan?
Present.
Trustee Albert?
Present.
Trustee Soberman?
Present.
And trustee Hagan?
I see him there. He's muted, so I don't know if Mr. Janito.
You can unmute yourself, Frank. It might be on the bottom left or the top of your computer. You can unmute yourself.
It's at the bottom left corner.
Mr. Janito, you've unlocked him, right? Because I know I was locked when I first got on.
Yeah, no, he's a co-host, so he should be fine.
He probably doesn't know what to do.
You have to un- let's see, can I unmute him? I see his name here. I'm going to try to click it.
I just shot him and asked him to unmute.
There we go, he's unmuted.
There we go. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Frank. It wasn't me. Turn on your camera. We love looking at your face.
Yes, if you have a camera.
Is my face there? No, it's not there.
You don't see it. You have to click launch video.
Launch video. There the other one. Yep, okey-dokey. Okay, Frank, we'll do the roll call, so you're here, I assume, correct? You say present. Very good.
We still don't see you, though. We just see a black screen that says Frank Hagan.
Yeah, I know, and I'm hitting start video in the bottom left.
That's correct. Bottom lower left.
Does it ask you which camera? Like, are you using a laptop that has a camera webcam built in?
Yeah, it says start video, and that's how I always get into Zoom, but it's not doing it. You better get your wife to help you, Frank. I can hear you. Okay, well, go ahead. If you get it going, Frank, during the time, we'll see, okay? You got it. All right, what we're going to do, we did the roll call, so all present. So let's, if you don't mind, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic. For which is standing. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Hey, please remain standing, please. For a moment of silence for our veterans, our first responders, individuals and families in need. Thank you. I'd like to start out, I wasn't. I wasn't, I didn't feel I did the one appointment right.
There I am.
You there, Frankie?
I'm here.
Hey, we see you. Very good, Frank.
I just wanted to do the appointment over for Stephanie Adwa. I didn't feel I did it properly, and I just want to correct that. It was, I feel it was my mistake. And so I'd just like to, if I could, please have a motion to confirm Steffi Adwa as our Associate Justice, please.
Motion, trustee Albert.
I'm going to take a roll call vote on this. Trustee Corrigan?
Yes.
Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Soberman?
Yes.
Trustee Hagan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passed. I also now would like to do a motion, a motion of, a resolution appointing Melissa B. Raymer as Register for a one-year term. Can I have a motion to confirm, please?
Motion, trustee Soberman.
Trustee Soberman, motion seconded by trustee Corrigan. Roll call, please. Trustee Corrigan, please?
Yes.
Trustee Albert, please?
Yes.
Trustee Soberman, please?
Yes.
And trustee Hagan, please?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion, motion passed. Now, I'd like to do a, I have a couple more. People have actually come to me since I did the Recreation Committee, and I expect some more next month. Because people are excited about what we're going to try to do. And I've actually talked to Kathy Mills and the Recreation, you know, and Nancy Christopher. And we want to get this going as an exciting thing for our whole community, getting more people involved. So right now, I'm going to appoint, it's a mayoral appointment. I'm going to appoint Heather Ford. She's very interested in the culture in the village. Actually, Isabel Hagerty, who came to me and asked me if she could be on it too. And my, you know, my intention was bringing, you know, fresh faces in. But she's a beautiful, fresh face, as I see her, so I say she's in, okay? And I see her as a good representative to our seniors, okay? I'd like to, I got in touch with Mary Guccione, who was actually, she was pleased and came to our nice holiday party here. And she was excited about getting on. It was a pleasure actually talking with her. And also Lynn Limbrick, who's also been on it, okay? So I want to point those, those people to that, to that board, okay? And again, I expect, even if you, you see people out there that you know of, that don't want to. And we will, you know, with the COVID, it's been a little tough having our first meeting. I want our first meeting, you know, in January. So we may do a Zoom, or we may try different things, or different contact. What am I, I wanted that in-person thing where they can give us their feelings and thoughts and get their excitement, okay? Now, we have, I'm just going to do now the, I'm going to have a, on the Board of Trustees, our meeting schedule, okay? We've resolved that a Board of Trustees have their monthly meetings on 7:00 PM on the first Monday of each month. And that the Board of Trustees shall hold their workshop meetings at 7:00 PM on the last Monday of each month. Can I have a motion for that, please?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Have a second, please?
Second, trustee Albert.
Trustee seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passed. Okay, go to our next one here. And the first meeting, I, again, I take the blame. I could have done a better job with this. So I just want to make sure we're legally correct, folks, okay? Designate the official newspaper, The Village of Suffering. Resolve the official newspaper, Village of Suffering, is the Rockland Journal News. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Motion, trustee Albert, seconded, please?
Second, trustee Hagan.
I'm going to get Hagan. I heard him there. Second, trustee Hagan.
I need some checks in hand.
All right, there you go. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passed. Now, I'm doing a resolution for designated, posting of the public notices. Resolve that pursuant to Public Offices Law 104, the places designated for posting of Village of Suffering public notices shall be the village. Paul Bullitt and Board located at Six One Washington Suffering, New York. Can I have a motion, please? Motion. Motion, sounds like everyone, so I'm going to get a second, okay? Can I get a second, please?
Second, trustee Soberman.
Second on that one. Can I have all those, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passed. Now, we have a designated, and you guys have all the paperwork in front of you. Designated a location for posting of legal notices. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, motion. Can I have a second, please?
Second. Trustee Soberman.
Trustee Soberman, second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those against? All those against? Motion passed. Can I have a, now we're going to do the holiday schedule for the Village of Suffering. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, can I have a second, please?
Second. Trustee Soberman.
Trustee Soberman, second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passed. Now, resolution, reimbursing expenses for authorization of travel. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion, Hagan.
I see, I think it was a tie between Hagan and Soberman, so I'm going to flip the coin. I'll give it a Hagan. Motion, seconded by Soberman, okay?
Perfect.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passed. Okay, now, we're going to establish any upcoming meetings. The next Board of Trustees meeting is scheduled for Monday, February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, at 7:00 PM. The workshop meeting will be Monday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, at 7:00 PM. Okay, now, let's see what time. We have 7:10. We have 7:15. We have a public hearing amending the vehicle and traffic law. That's the one on, that's the thing on Chestnut Street, okay? I was, as you might have remembered, and I'm just going to talk in general here while waiting for, for the public hearing to open. We have a situation where, where there's a restaurant equipment store. Then he has, and he has some, you know, and he brings in eighteen-wheelers and big trucks to do deliveries. He's been there, been there for many years. He's owned for it. And, but it's caused certain problems with people exiting the Sheldon. So what we're trying to do is come up with a solution where we can have those eighteen-wheelers and keep the Sheldon residents safe, and all the community safe. So what we did, and I went actually down there with the chief, and I've been there more than once already. Because there was a barber there who's very concerned with it. And his, his spot, you know, and he's trying to survive like everyone else. But we need room for the trucks to park in. So what we're going to be doing is we're adding a spot across the street, and we're making it safer on this side, one spot on this side. I also talked to the building owner of the restaurant place. And I said, listen, you putting your cars in the right spot, you putting those trucks there is very important. So when a truck comes, you don't take the delivery until he puts it in the proper space. So the first spot close to the Sheldon will be changing the signage there. So if anyone parks there, we're going to use enforcement. We're going to use enforcement with our parking authority, and we're going to use enforcement with our police department. Because it's not just a conveniency issue, it's a safety issue. And I think we all are on board with that. We're keeping everyone safe down there. So I went down there, I measured it myself, and that was, you know, that was actually before the first meeting. But then Charles Swickie went and measured it too. We went to the professionals, and I did the old Irish style, you know, my little tape ruler. They did the professional way. So we want, so we'll, we'll, we'll open this public hearing up. We'll see if anything, what, anything comes with it, and whatever everyone's comments are. Because it's important to hear from everyone. But I don't, with what stands there, unfortunately, when the Sheldon was built, there were mistakes made. And, but we have to eat those mistakes now. They, you know, they probably maybe should have made other cars come out the other way, or move the parking up. So nobody had the intent of making mistakes, but looking, you could always, anyone could be a Monday night, Monday morning quarterback, you know? You know, after the Super Bowl, I can tell you the winner. Before the Super Bowl, I have a little problem. So we'll, I guess we'll go from there. Seven thirteen, anyone have anything they want to say, or?
Can I say something, Hagan? You added a parking spot for the regular public on the other side of the street?
That's correct. You know what? I think the better person to talk to this and wait a minute is, because he's going to, he's going to introduce to this. Because he's, is putting along his, Mr. Magrino, okay? So he has, but yes, we're going to be adding a spot across the street, doing the signage properly here, and attempting to make it safer on that side. I thought, you know, the main guy had a concern there was Robert. He runs a nice business there. He's been in this village for years. He's a caring guy, and it's important to, you know, help him and work with him too. So, but a bigger, a big problem in the village too is not just that, but it was not the parking enforcement happening properly. With cars sitting there for eight hours and not parking in the lots where they should. So there was a multitude of things. So it's not, it's not, it's not a one answer fix-all. It's a multitude of things that can make this better for everyone down there. So, and I'm sorry, let's see where we are, so.
And Robert happens to be my barber, too.
And hair looks fabulous. We don't want to lose him, okay?
I've been going, I've been going to him for about twenty-five years.
Okay, well, I have to be honest here. Joe Corrigan's hair looks better than all of yours, so I'm going to put that on the record, okay?
I second that. I second that.
So I think we got, I think we got a few more seconds here. I'm going to open up the, I'm going to open up the, that public hearing for the local law amending section two fifty-four, vehicle and traffic parking schedules, okay? And if this doesn't work, we'll, we'll, we'll address it more. I mean, that's if we vote for it or not, okay? But there will be signings put up. There will be, but enforcement is going to be the key here. If they don't have enforcement, then it'll, a lot of things are going to be thrown out. So right now, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and I think, Magrino, would you like to say something? Okay, I'm going to.
Sure, good evening, mayor. Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year, Bob.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. So this is, as the mayor indicated, a public hearing with respect to Chestnut Street. It's two, Mike, can I share my screen?
I think you can. You're a co-host, yeah.
It's my guy McMahon, is that what you're saying? That's all.
We all see you.
No, I'm trying to share my screen, okay? So I just wanted confirmation, as the mayor was saying, the two changes will be on the west side of Chestnut Street. Two hundred and thirty-one feet down from the Chestnut and Lafayette intersection will be a spot. And then, I'm sorry, the parking is prohibited, sorry. And then the loading zone, one hundred and forty-seven feet down, there'll be the three spots, as the mayor indicated, with the timing. And again, I just wanted to make sure Charles Swickie and Police Chief and the mayor and everybody is on board that those are the correct numbers that we had. And assuming all is in order, mayor, you know, it's, you can open up to the public if the public has any comment.
Okay, let's make a motion, open up the public hearing. Get a motion, please?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Motion, get a second?
Second, trustee Hagan.
And trustee Albert.
Give it to Hagan, give it to Hagan.
Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion passed. Okay, let's go, just open up the public hearing, so.
Okay, mayor, just a quick note for the public, since we're on Zoom here. On a computer or tablet or a similar device, on the bottom of the screen, they'll see a raise hand icon that they can click on. That'll raise their hand, it'll bring us to our attention. If you're on a smartphone, it's the same thing on the left-hand corner. And on a telephone, if you're just on a telephone, you hit a star nine. We'll see your hand get raised, and then we'll call upon you. We'll ask you to identify yourself and your address. So we'll open it up now. Anybody that wants to speak can raise their hand.
I have a question, Mr. Janito. I realize I'm one of the co-hosts or whatever. I don't have a raised hand on mine. So I want to make sure that the residents have that available on theirs. Because I don't see such a hand available, but I've seen it in the past. Like, I'm wondering if something changed.
No, they should have it. You're a co-host, so you probably don't need it. That's.
Okay, that could be. Because I just want to make sure that something, that nothing has changed.
I have, I have. Well, I'll do this as well. I'll open up the chat to everybody if there's somebody.
That I have.
That needs to, to speak and enter something in the chat box if you can't get your hand raised.
Yeah, I agree. Let's do that, just in case.
Yeah, the chat is open now to everybody, so.
See that. I guess nobody's interested.
Or they just like the solution.
We'll go with that. They like the solution.
Yes.
Okay, so can I go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Second, trustee Soberman.
Second, trustee Soberman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion passed. All right, so we, we're going to wait, we're going to wait till you come up later. Want to do, want to do, want to pass it down?
You can do, you can do the vote now, since we're here. The public hearing is closed. I have the resolution. I don't know if you have it there handy.
Yes. Yeah, I had the resolution. Okay, good. You threw it off to me. I didn't raise my hand.
I got it.
No, I mean it.
I couldn't read it even, like.
Very slick. No, I got it. I'm like. Village of Suffering Resolution two thousand and twenty-two, adopting local law, resolution to adopt local law amending. Chapter two fifty-four of the Village Code regarding vehicles and traffic schedules. Eleven, parking permitted. And eighteen X five, there's three loading zones on Chestnut Street. Whereas on January third, two thousand and twenty-two, the Village Board of Trustees.
Oh, no, sorry, mayor, that wouldn't be January third. That would be, I'll have to fill in the date on that. I think it was back in November. That first one. The Village Board expresses intention to conduct.
Oh, okay, right, okay, fine, okay. All right, you got the date now, or you want to look it up?
I don't have it handy now.
Okay, no problem. Whereas, whereas in November, the Village Board of Trustees expresses intention to conduct a public hearing to consider amendments to the Village Code. Chapter two fifty-four, vehicle and traffics. And whereas, on that day, the Village Board declares its intention to serve as lead agency for purpose of Secra. And no other entity expressing a desire to serve as lead agency. And whereas the public hearing consideration of said amendment was continued at the regular meeting, the Village Board of Trustees, open on December sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, continued to January third, two thousand and twenty-two. Now, therefore be resolved that the Village Board hereby declared itself the lead agency for the purpose of environment review under Secra. And determine that the matter is a type-two action, thus requiring no first, no further environment review. And be further resolved based on all the information before the Board and the findings herein after made. The Board of Trustees hereby adopts local law number one of two thousand and twenty-two as follow. Can I please have a motion on that, please?
I move. Trustee Soberman moves.
Okay, trustee Soberman moves. I get a second, please?
Second, Hagan.
Second, second, Hagan. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion passed. Now, we're going to have another, we're going to have another. Public hearing in Reverend Mia Tapas and Board LLC. That's actually on the same street, across from the barber shop there. It's a, it's a special use permit for live entertainment. Rob, can you, can you explain that one for me?
Sure.
Can I make a motion? Want to make a motion, a public hearing on it, on that? On the live entertainment?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, seconded by.
Second, Corrigan.
You're kind of quiet, Frank. I don't always hear you. I'm sorry. All right?
Oh, all right. I got it up at fifty. Should I put it up higher in the hearing?
No, I did, maybe just talk louder. I don't hear you all the time. That's why I don't want to miss you.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
You're good now. Speak at that level. That's perfect. Thank you, trustee.
So I'm going to send in here, so I say, seconded by trustee Corrigan. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Motion passed. Okay, Rob, if you go ahead with that, please.
Thank you, mayor. So yes, the owner of Mia Tapas has applied for a special permit to allow live entertainment. That means the code recognizes that live entertainment can be permitted in this zone under certain conditions. And under, that's authorized under Village Code two sixty-six thirty-three K. The applicant made, they made application. They went to the planning board, and the planning board made some suggestions. One of them being, the hours would be, and I think the applicant agreed to this. Thursday, the live entertainment would be allowed on Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays between the hours of ten PM and one AM. There'd be no more than two instruments, which I believe the applicant is just, you know, again, seeking to have, you know, maybe a guitar player, piano, I don't know. But, you know, no more than two instruments at this point. Obviously, the sound not to be audible beyond the premises. And we put in the condition that this was for one year, so the board can see how it's going, see if there's any complaints. And they can come back and renew, and, you know, you can make it longer at that point if you wish. And then, Terry, you mentioned a couple of conditions that if it would be, and I'll add those to the resolution, that if there's a violation.
If I violate the special permit, then they can be suspended with the hearing to be held by the Board of Trustees with respect to a continuation of the suspension or revocation.
So that's where we are for the public hearing. I don't know if any board members have any comments. If not, we can open up for public comment.
Hagan, the only comment is, did they do all the paperwork to open up? Did they do everything? Is everything in order?
In terms of what?
Their application. They said exactly what they want, and you, the two lawyers understand it, and no problem.
Yes, it went to the plan, yes, it's been to the planning board. They reviewed it. It's ready to roll.
Thank you.
And they're getting no later, Frank, than anyone else. The latest you get is one AM. That's it.
Yeah, that's it, right?
They're asking for three nights, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and they're not going any later than anyone else, okay? And then, as Terry mentioned, he put some restrictions, the restrictions that we've always had. So we have a little power and gets, in case it, you know, for whatever reason, it doesn't go with, what suits the neighborhood and the public and the business district.
If they wanted to add additional nights in the future, is that something they could, you know, during that first year? Is that something they could come to the board for?
They can come back and apply to us.
You'd have to come back to the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, I think the applicant may be here. I don't know if they're on, but they did. They want to talk. Does anyone hear from the, I mean, I would go ahead and approve it if they're not here, because they're not asking for anything out of the loop out of the wild. And it may be because we went online, that they, if they're not here, that could be a reason they're not here. Some people aren't as literate on this as I'm not myself. So any comments, anyone?
No.
Open the public.
We have a raised hand here from Joseph Gravania. One moment, Joseph, we're going to unmute you. Go ahead. You should be able to speak now. Joseph, can you unmute yourself?
Is that good? Hear me now?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so it's Joseph Gravania, Sixth Beachwood Road, Suffering. I just wanted to say that it sounds like a good application to me. The, I mean, some of them works in advertising. It's always a good idea when we attract people into the village. And in the COVID time, a lot of people are scared to get out of their house. So I think it is good that the business is trying to, you know, attract people into the village, you know, and spend some dollars, which will help everybody. That's all I want to add. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'll wait another minute. If no one do it, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Again, if you have a problem trying to get on board with raising your hand, we have the chat open. You can just indicate you'd like to speak there.
Okay, I guess I'll go ahead. I'll make a motion to. No, I mean, can I get a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, motion?
Second, trustee Soberman.
Trustee Soberman, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against?
Would you like me to do the resolution this time, mayor?
Your turn.
All right, so this is the proposed resolution. I won't go through everything, but it's basically indicating, whereas Alex Garcia Flores is the owner, seeking a special permit for live entertainment pursuant to two sixty-six thirty-three K of the Suffering Village Code. They've appeared before the Village Board and confirmed that's being requested as accessory to the permitted use as a bar or restaurant. To be conducted wholly within the enclosed structure, subject to occupancy limitation. And whereas the applicant indicated live entertainment will consist of acoustical music and/or not more than two instruments. Which the Board finds not to be detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the occupants. Or have a negative impact on the neighborhood. Whereas the matter was referred to the Village Planning Board, which waived the necessity for site plan review, made recommendations and comments that are incorporated by reference herein. And where it's a type-two action under Secra, no further environment or review is required. Be resolved, the Village Board hereby finds that the applicant has provided sufficient information to grant a special use permit for live entertainment. Be resolved, the Village Board hereby finds that the applicant has provided sufficient information to grant a special use permit for live entertainment, uh, to Mia Tapas, the 20 Chestnut Street, provided said live entertainment shall adhere to requirements of 260, uh, 633K, um, and shall be permitted on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday between the hours of 10:00 PM and 1:00 AM. Be further resolved, special permit authorized for a period of one year, and they may return to renew the permit. Uh, be further resolved that this, uh, special permit may be revoked upon, or suspended upon hearing before the Village Board, and be further resolved that the special permit may not be transferred, so if anyone's inclined, uh, ask somebody to make that motion, or stop that motion.
Uh, so, Rob, excuse me, Rob, we have one raised hand here, I don't know if that person missed, uh, raising their hand before.
Sure.
If it's okay with the board, I'll ask them, it's Suzanne, if you want to unmute yourself, you can speak now.
I hit the button, sorry.
Okay, no problem. So no comment there?
Technology thing.
That's okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I guess we'll do, I'll make a.
All right, I'm sorry, before, uh, you go forward, I just, somebody just called me, I think the planning board, I gotta check, is indicating that they recommend it till 11:00 on Thursdays and Sundays, hold on one second.
Sunday wasn't part of this.
Right, I think they meant, I think on Saturday morning it would be till 1:00 AM, but again, that, that's their recommendation, it's up to you if you wanna do it, do you wanna do 11:00 on Thursday?
No, I think, listen, the guy's trying to, it's tough enough with COVID, he's trying to go ahead, Thursday is not a, Thursday is, is, is right before the weekend, I don't think it's unreasonable, uh, my opinion is, I don't think it's unreasonable if the other peo, now, if the other people are gonna go to, not many places go to 11 o'clock only in, 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 in the restaurant business, or in that business, and actually survive doing it. You could take a ride down around the rest of the county or somewhere else, you'll see it just doesn't, it doesn't work, because if you're gonna stop your music by 11 o'clock, that means you're starting it by 7:00 or 8:00. That's not where, that's not where most of the music is done, and where most of the things are done. So I don't think it's unreasonable, but, you know, the board all has a vote, but I don't think it's an unreasonable thing. I think we, as, as Mr. Rice put in there, we have our, 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 our checks and balances if something does go, does go wrong. And, uh, I, I think it's tougher out there for people, so if he has a chance to buy, because you give him the two hours, and he's not going against the neighborhoods and the people, I think we, I think we help him.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'd like to, I'd like to keep it, keep it at, at the one, at the, uh, at the one, the one, the 1:00 AM.
Yep. I'm good with that.
On, on the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we, we're not talking about Sunday, we're not talking about anything else, we're talking about what's on the application. I don't think it's unreasonable for the gentleman.
Agree.
So if somebody wants to adopt, uh, make a motion on it?
Why make such a motion, Fred, Fred Salberman, trustee?
Can I get a second on that?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, any against? Motion passed, and we wish, we all wish this gentleman good luck in his business, coming to our, coming to our community, and, and surviving these times, okay?
Exactly, I look forward to going there. When it's safe.
Right, true, true, okay, now, uh, what I'm gonna have to do, yeah, what I'm gonna have to do is, is I'm gonna have to, on the Accola Home Occupation, they're still working on the application, because what happened was a GML came, General Melissa Law from the county, the county came, um, they, they had certain things that they requested, so they want this long form, so they're gonna have to fill out this long form, so if we cannot, I, I'd like a motion to adjourn that public hearing to February, February 7th, so we can, we can have it there, they'll have a form, and we'll be in front of everyone, I think you people may, uh, know that you, you've already, you, they've come in front of you on a couple of occasions, but the form, they, they, the county want a different form, we, you know, so we're going with, uh, under the advice of council, we're gonna do that proper form and, and move ahead legally for us and for them, huh? So, if I can get a motion to adjourn that to February 7th for the Accola Home Occupation.
Uh, Hagan will make the motion.
Okay, motion made by Hagan, second, please?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Second by Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any against? Motion passed, okay, um, do you have any, have any updates, uh, Mr. Magrino, or Terry, or anything?
I don't have any further updates, I don't believe.
Any updates, Terry?
Nope, in the interim, uh, I've been, uh, going over some of the pending matters and so forth, and, uh, dealing with some of the outside consultants, but I don't have anything to report tonight, thank you, just have a happy new year, everybody, and stay healthy.
Very good, okay. Uh, I'd like to do the fire department now, uh, Chief Coffer, are you available, sir? Any reports from the fire department?
I did hear the fire alarms go off, it may be out.
Well, we have to come back to, we, we'll come back to, if he wants to call in, and I'll do some sort of thing with my phone. Um, well, let's go to the police department, Chief Lachlan, please?
Good evening, everyone, and happy new year.
Good evening, thank you, chief.
In the month of December, the police department responded to 721 calls for service. Um, I just wanted to bring two particular cases to the board's attention that occurred in December. Um, both of the cases, the officers did an exemplary job, and I would just like to recognize them for their efforts. As I'm sure the board's aware, in early December, we responded to a hit and run, uh, automobile crash, in which two pedestrians were struck. One of the pedestrians sustained broken bones, the second sustained severe injuries, including head, facial, and spinal injuries. The driver of the vehicle fled the scene prior to our arrival. Uh, once the patrol officers got on scene, they gathered crucial evidence, uh, which was followed up on by our detective bureau. Um, through excellent police work of all the members involved, we identified a suspect, located the vehicle involved in the accident, it subsequently obtained a confession from the driver of the vehicle. The driver was arrested and charged with two counts of lea- leaving the scene of a personal injury accident, one is a misdemeanor and one is a felony. Uh, the second incident I wanted to bring to the board's attention was, uh, involved a juvenile who was attending our holiday parade. This juvenile made some threats to harm spectators who were in attendance at the parade on a social media platform while the parade was in progress, excuse me. Uh, Police Officer Ingwe was able to identify the juvenile through his social media platforms, and broadcast his identity and description, officers detailed at the parade. Officer Varis was able to locate the suspect and place him in custody a short time later without incident. The juvenile was taken to the hospital for evaluation and subsequently charged, uh, in family court for the incident. Both of these incidents, the officers involved did an excellent job, and I just wanted to bring, uh, these incidents to the board's attention and recognize the officers for their. Uh, my last, my last update item I have for the board, I, I believe, uh, I sent the board, I copied the board on an email on this previously in the month, uh, we were selected to receive a US Department of Justice grant to implement a body-moor and camera program for our department. Uh, the grant is a 50% matching grant, which means the Department of Justice pays half the cost, and we're responsible for the other half of the cost. Uh, the grant will pay up to $12,816, which is approximately half of the cost, uh, it would be to implement our, our body camera system, so that's, that's good news for us. Uh, the only agenda item I have tonight is, um, I would like to ask the board, I would like to request permission from myself and Lieutenant Martinez to attend a police executive training course hosted by the New York State Department of Cris- Criminal Justice Services in Niagara Falls, that course is February 14th to February 18th. I believe the board has already been provided with the training agenda and course curriculum, but if you don't have it, I can go over it with you, if you, you know, so choose. Uh, there's no cost to attend the training, lodging is also covered by the, uh, State Chiefs of Police Association. The only cost the village would incur would be for gas and tolls.
How minimal.
Okay, well, I guess I'll, I'll make a motion for that, can I get a motion for the police to?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert, can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Salberman.
Second, Trustee, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion passed, and Chief, if you tell everyone involved in these, uh, these police things and police acts, and we appreciate the good job they're doing, and keep up the good work, and we appreciate them keeping an eye on the public and, and watching out for all of us, all right? Thank you.
I'll pass it on, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for good work there, thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Okay, next, uh, we have, uh, Culture and Recreation, uh.
Ma- Mayor, just to let you know, I saw that Jeremy Cowford came back on, I see him at.
All right, we'll cut back to him, uh, the fire department, Chief Coffer, would you like to make a report, please? Sorry, Kathy, we'll, we'll be right back to you, Kathy, we apologize.
No problem.
Okay.
He's getting on, Jeremy, if you're there, we're here, okay?
Hi, Kathy. Hi, how was everybody?
Very good.
Thank you. Uh, just, uh, quick update, uh, I, well, actually, I don't have the update, I don't have any, uh, of the data from last year, I plan to, uh, present it to the Village Board in February for how many calls we responded to in 2021, as well as, uh, training hours and man-hours. Uh, aside from that, just, uh, happy new year to everybody, and stay healthy and stay safe.
But, could you, could you, could you please tell the board that I know that you, you've, you've kinda closed down the firehouses for a little bit, because of COVID, to make?
Yeah, they, they are currently closed to, uh, all social events, the only thing that members are allowed to resp- or come to the firehouse for are firefals. We're not conducting drills or meetings either.
Okay, good, thank you, and we, we appreciate you, you're looking out for everyone's safety, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, now, go, go, let's go to Culture and Recreation, Kathy, because she gave me a dirty look when I cut her off.
Good evening, everybody, happy new year to everyone and all. Uh, a few things that we have coming up, um, I'd like to thank the new members for the Culture and Recreation Board for coming on board. I look forward to working with the new members and the current members. Uh, Nancy, Elaine, and I from Recreation are all excited to meet the new people, uh, we've worked with them in the past on the rec board, uh, we see Isabel all the time at the center, she's involved with a lot of activities, a lot of programs, so thank you, Isabel, for joining, uh, our rec board, and Heather Ford, Heather was on the rec board in the past, so we look forward for her coming back and working with her again. Uh, we are taking a pause right now at the community center due to all the, uh, you know, the COVID up, uptick right now. So as of January 14th, I know the mayor and the board will reevaluate and see if we will be opening back up, which we hope we will be able to do, but again, everything is being done for cautious reasons and for everybody's safety, so, in the meantime, the rec staff, Elaine and Nancy and I are looking forward to doing some Zoom again, we haven't done Zoom in a while, thank goodness, but we are ready and willing and able to pick those back up. We do have the equipment that we bought during the pandemic last year, so we will be sending out emails to our residents and picking up the Zoom classes again, so, uh, tomorrow, we're gonna get a schedule of what we're gonna have for the next two weeks, send it to the board to let you know, and then we will start doing some programs in the meantime. Uh, in the meantime, if anybody that is watching, or anybody that knows somebody that's looking to find out about programs, we do have our email blast that we send out, and we send that out on Friday mornings, and as information is needed. So if you are not signed up to get our emails, but you would like to, you can email Nancy in Recreation, and the email address is N Christopher, so N C H R I S T O P H E R, I hope I spelled that right, at sufferny dot gov, let her know that you are interested in getting, uh, emails for the village, and we send out those out for weekly updates, we send that out for informational purposes, like snow, um, you know, anything that needs to get out to the residents, we send it out through that, so if you are interested, or if you know someone, please email Nancy at N Christopher at sufferny dot gov, and we will add you to the list. And I think that's it for now, just because we're on pause, but, uh, we do look forward to ramping back up, and I wish everybody a very wonderful and happy new year, and we know 2022 is gonna be better.
I hope so.
I just wanna point out that Mrs. Hagerty asked for a trampoline for the seniors. Okay? And, uh, and, and I, I just wanna point out, I, I made a decision to close the community center, because the, the COVID is going rampant. I felt a responsibility to protect the seniors, but not only to protect the seniors, but also to protect our workers. The workers of the, of the DPW, they also have been affected by the COVID as, as the police department has. And, and I think it was important for them to have to spend the time to clean it and sanitize it every day, it was taking them away with, with being short help of doing their, their responsibilities, of, of whether it's garbage or fixing roads, so I had, I had to make a decision in, in the best interest of, 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 of the public, and, and, and also the workers, because Charles and me have been, Charles, me, and, uh, Charles Wiki, and, and Head of Public Works, and Joe Hunt, the supervisor there, we've been, we've been in close contact, and, and we, we, we feel the need to protect everyone here, we're hoping that this is a, this is a, a quicker thing that comes, you know, that we hope it's not months and months, we hope it's weeks, we're gonna reevaluate, uh, on, on the 14th, to see if we're gonna go open with the 15th, but it's not, but you have to understand about the help that we have, and the workers, and, and how some of them are out of work, and how they actually go, the DPW goes and sanitizes it. So I was taking them away from other duties while they were short help, and that's, 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 I want the public to understand why certain decisions were made, but thank you, huh? Any other comments, or go on to our next, uh, um, we have, uh, our grant writer now, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, have a good new year, see you soon.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody.
Uh, good evening, board, and, uh, happy new year to everybody.
Happy new year.
Uh, it's a little disappointing that we're back on Zoom, I can't believe it, you know? But, uh, hopefully, the next meeting, uh, this will all be beyond, uh, behind us. Um, so I got a few things on Community Development Block Grants, uh, the Community Development Block Grant is actually federal money, and, uh, the federal money comes from HUD, and HUD then gives it to the county, and then, uh, we apply for it. And one of the requirements is that, uh, HUD makes you do mandatory training, uh, every year, uh, in order to apply for that money, and then to be able to receive that money, and I did complete that training, uh, just like a week ago, so, uh, and we're certified to apply and receive money for the Community Development Block Grants. Uh, while talking about the block grants, I mentioned at the last meeting how we were recently awarded, uh, the 2020 and 2021 CDVG grant simultaneously for the West Maple Avenue sidewalks, which is $300,000 in aggregate. Um, worked with, uh, Terry Rice, uh, Rob Magrino, and Michael Janito, and we got all of the required documents over to the county, um, certifications, um, and a lot of paperwork, everything from budgets as to who was gonna be benefiting from this project and et cetera, and we're waiting for the next step, which hopefully will be for them, um, to send us a, uh, an agreement, uh, within the next maybe 60 days, that's what I'm hoping. Uh, Dazney, the garbage truck, which is a $250,000 purchased, and we have a $200,000 grant, we sent all the paperwork to Dazney, they came back with a couple interrogatories which had to be answered, for example, like site control, they wanted a copy of the deed of where the actual garbage truck is going to be housed, so I supplied them with that information. Um, that's an example of something that's requested, and also the backhoe grant, which was $125,000. Um, it's my understanding that, uh, we have now actually, uh, put in the request to purchase the backhoe, so, uh, that's fantastic, and we should be receiving that shortly, so that's the work of, uh, Charles Wiki and the DPW and Joe Hunt, so I'd like to thank them for that, and that's it.
Excellent.
Thank you, and happy new year.
Yeah, it's great.
Thanks, Fred.
Hey Fred, thank you very much, and, uh, show us the money, okay, Fred? Jeremy, we want the money, all right, that's all we want from you, all right?
Okay.
Got a nice haircut, but we don't care about your haircut, we care about showing us the money, Fred. I'm joking, have a good day. Now, uh.
Thanks, Fred.
We're gonna move on to public, we're gonna move on to public comment, okay? I'd like to have a motion, open up the public comment, please?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Motion by Alpert, second?
Second, by Trustee Salberman.
Trustee Salberman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Uh, motion passed, uh, go ahead, is, is Mike, to see if anybody from the public has anything to say?
Oh, once again, you can raise your hand, uh, to get, uh, called upon, and if you have some difficulty doing that, then please use the chat to let us know that you'd like to speak.
Public comment. Mike, there's one chat on there, but is anybody raising their hand? Mike, there's one chat on there, but is anybody raising their hand?
No, I don't see it. Okay, there's Andrew Zaborski, uh, Zavaski, I'm sorry. Uh, he would like to speak. So one, one moment, Andrew, let me find you in our list here, and, uh, we can ask you to unmute. Okay, you, you should be able to speak now.
Happy New Year, everyone.
You as well.
Happy New Year.
I sent something off, uh, to the, to the county clerk, I mean, to the village clerk today in reference to, uh, the homeless issue, uh, that is out in the village. And I want to first of all commend the mayor on taking on this homeless issue, uh, problem. And I was just concerned, in the, in the memos that I, I sent over, I noticed other villages have a transport to the, uh, warming center, uh, Havestraw, Pomona, Nyack. And I was just wondering why Sufferin doesn't have a transport to the warming center, uh, every, you know, once a day in the evening.
Um, okay, and thank you for your questions and comments, Andrew. Um, as you know, you work for the county somewhere yourself there. I sat down with, um, Commissioner of Social Services, and, um, we attempt, what we're attempting to do is, they're going to, after New Year here, they're going to be bringing their assets down to the village. I've been locating where the people are living. There are, there were different places in the woods where they are, where they are staying. And, um, we now, through Catholic charities or Helping Hands, what they'll do, they'll even give people, we're going to attempt to take people in, if they, you can't force anyone. We're going to attempt to, to talk to them, and, and if they want housing, the county will provide housing to a certain degree. Most of it is in Sufferin, some of it's in, in, in different areas. They would also give them what they call SNAP benefits. SNAP benefits are where you get so much money. It could be up to, let's say, $200 based on your income. Most of them don't have incomes, so, so they would probably get the whole thing. They've changed this, so now the SNAP benefits, you, they can, you, you used to have, have an address for it. They will use the Catholic charities to dress for it. So these people can get that, so they can have food. What I've done in the meantime, I've, I've, with the clerk, with the clerk of Sufferin and this village board here, we have, we have gone ahead and I, with the chief of police and the police department, I've gotten donations and gotten Uber cards. So if somebody goes to the police department, and I've been getting that word out there, they can get a ride to the warming center. The county one is warming centers are 50 Centaur, Tarrin Road. And they can, they can stay there as long as it's, as long as it's under thirty, as long as it's under thirty-two degrees, and they will, they will give them a meal also. So if it stays under thirty-two for days, they get to stay there. So I'm attempting to, um, as I, as I, Jones Sylvester is the commissioner there. I've actually known him for many years, and, and the county has been nothing but absolutely great in dealing with us. And I gotta, I gotta thank the Commissioner of Social Service, and I gotta thank actually Ed Day, huh, and, and all his forces that he, that he has worked with. They do care, and so we have the, they do not bring that transportation this far yet. They, they go as far as, I think, Walmart. They don't come as far as Sufferin yet. That's why I came up with this, and me, with the village board, and the, and, uh, as I said, I'm working with the chief of police, who actually sent the memo out to all his people. So right now, we have $300 in that fund. It costs about $30 to take someone over there. I have access to many other people that are so thrilled. There are so many caring people in Sufferin that want to do this also. So we have, we, we, myself and the board and, and a, and a gentleman, uh, named Richard Burns, who actually made the chairman of homeless committee. And he, he's, he's, he's right there with it. He, he, he put his, he put his money where his mouth is, and I've actually had more donations ready to come. I just don't want to take it if we need them, because I'm going to reach out for other things, like garbage cans in the village and other things. So I will, I will, but I, I, I feel comfortable in saying I can come up with thousands of dollars in donations from the caring community we have right now. And that's, that's where, where it stands right now, Andrew.
All right. Well, I thank you very much for your efforts and, and, and helping the homeless out, especially with the cold weather that's approaching and everything else. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Zavaski.
I talk too much, Fred. I apologize, okay? Get going, I'm sorry. So, uh, any other question with public, anyone else have anything to say? We love comments. We love hearing from the public. We love hearing your, your good points. We love hearing your, your, the things you're disgruntled with, because we're here to help you. And we will, we will, and we will address them. We will address them. We as a board, we talk all the time as board. We get along very well. Mayor, we have, uh, Mr. Gravania. Uh, Mr. Gravania, you should be able to speak. Just unmute yourself.
Thanks, you take, thanks, you give a second to us, guys. I did not know about the homeless situation in the village, Andrew. Please bring that to attention. Reach out to me separately. I have some ideas for you that could be helpful for, uh, the situation. I have, I also have some contacts. Yes, if you take my number down if you want separately, the nine-one-seven-four-seven-six-nine-three-five. If you want to give me a call, Andrew, on that. Sorry, Mike, I just wanted to just make sure you have my contact information for that situation.
Oh, no, Andrew, Andrew, you're, you're fine. You're fine.
Yeah, but, uh, anyway.
I was thinking about bringing him to your house, uh.
No. I didn't even, Mike, I, I knew this here. I didn't know there was a situation in the village. I apologize. I didn't know about that issue, issue. But, um, a quick question for the board. The, um, I know it's a little bit of ways away, you know, for everything, but the, uh, what are we doing right now as a board, you know, to attract, I know we're past the holiday season, but as we call it head towards the fall, to attract people to the village? Yeah, I know, a long, a long time ago, I wanted to put together a 5K, do other events to bring people into, into the village. But just, uh, as some out of the box ideas, if we could do for the upcoming year, maybe look to do, maybe like a, we do with the Community Sufferin Day, maybe have a 5K or something we could get people outside the area into, a charitable contribution or race, or something that would be helpful to bring, bring more people into the village, especially, you know, once COVID passes, hopefully towards the spring. You know, we maybe do a 5K, we could do, you know, we put that towards charity. That could be some, just some ideas to help, uh, bring people to the village in the spring. Once COVID passes. That's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, it's Hagan.
Hey.
Can you stop laughing, Joe? The, the homeless, that includes the veterans. You said that before, correct? There are a couple of homeless veterans in the village on the, uh, getting, uh, shelter?
Listen, all veteran, all veterans are important to me, but just as all homeless are important to me. We're attacking, we're attacking this with them all, because it doesn't matter who you are. I want no one cold. I'm a veteran myself, as you know, Frank.
Yes.
We don't want anyone to be cold, but someone wants, part, part of the problems with the homeless is about seventy-five percent of the homeless are because, and, and Fred's done a lot of charity work himself, and maybe somebody else have it. Seventy-five percent of homeless because of mental disease or because of drinking, drugs. Twenty-five percent are only because they, they don't have, they're not financially equipped, or unfortunate things happen to them. So the twenty-five percent are probably the easier ones to help, because they're, they're, they're more likely to, you know, help. It's a psychological thing you have to go through. So as, as I talked with the board of health and, uh, talked with Jones Sylvester, it, it's like, it's an approach you do a little at a time. I've actually talked to a few of them in, in the village already myself. I've, I've approached them. I approached themselves. I represent myself as the mayor, and I, and I tell them. So they can even get these, these, these certain telephones. I forget what to call right now. But, um, that, so they can get certain things. So, um, the county, we're, we're, we're communicating with the county. We hope, you know, it was right before the holidays. We hope they, they, they come soon. We set up the other way. Um, I have a, a fire I'm putting out to give to one of the homeless, to give to the other homeless, because I don't want to be, sometimes you be too intrusive, they get afraid of, huh? And I don't want to do that. Thank you. When I get to a question for you, you back away. You don't call me. Same thing.
Thanks.
Okay, so any more comments, Mike? Anything, Mike? I don't see anything here, uh, but on the Facebook side of things, Naomi Cordova wanted us to post a link for donations. Maybe others would be interested in that as well, Mayor, but I suggested that she write to Mayor or mcurly@suffernny.gov, um, for further information on that. No, and, and, and we, we, we thank her for being, like, one of the great citizens we have who, who hears, hears about a situation and jumps right in to help. And we, we, I thank her for that, as the board does. Other than that, Mayor, I don't see any other, uh, people wishing to comment. Okay, can I, can I, you know what, then, based on that, I will, I, can I get a motion to, to close the public comment, please?
I assume. Trustee Saberman.
Uh, trustee Saberman moves. Can I get a second, please?
Second trustee Hagan.
Trustee, Hagan, I can hear you well, too, Frankie.
Oh, thank you.
Can I get a, uh, everyone in favor, please?
Oh, okay, yes. Hi, sorry.
Anyone against? Right, motion passed. Now, I feel sorry for Mr. Awicky, has his long list here, okay, Joe? And, uh, I'm, I'm going to give you the floor, sir. Um, what we're going to do in time, and we, I think we should seriously consider this. We seriously consider on, on, on certain items, when they're already in the budget and already approved, that, that, that we can do it as, as one, one joint, one joint motion down the line. On certain ones, not everything. Certain things you can't, you know, especially when there's no, no votes needed, okay? Just to move it along, because I, because in time, I expect a lot more public participation, because I'm yearning for more public participation. I want to hear from people. So go ahead, Mrs. Awicky.
Here, I'm muted.
Charles, you're muted. Don't be trying to push this over to me there, Mr. Wiki. Charles, check that the bottom of your left-hand side of the screen. There's a little microphone. It's probably muted.
Can we unmute him?
Uh, there he goes.
Yeah, you should be unmuted now, Charles. Oh, but he's frozen.
Charles, go to the lower left corner of your screen.
Yeah, he's.
He's unmuted, but he's frozen.
Eric, go ahead, Charles.
Fine, he's fine. Everybody relax.
This is a trick for us to buy Charles a new computer. It's not going to work, Charles, so just hit the button.
This is terrible. He may have to call in. There's the, there's a phone number, too.
He'll get it, he'll get it. I got faith in him.
He's talking, but you're not getting the fine.
Charles, if you hear us, we can't hear you.
He knows.
Oh, this. Hey. Ever easy. We'll give him another minute. If he can't do it, I guess I'll, I'll take charge.
I think, I think he's calling in.
Okay, very good. Okay, he's dialed in, Charles, you should be able to unmute.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, I'm working with a new, I might, I might have to get off of this, I guess. Okay, I got a, uh, Christmas gift, a new laptop, and, uh, still haven't totally get familiar with yet. Anyway, um, good evening, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Okay, um, so I'll give you a quick update. The Wayne Avenue sidewalk project is, uh, now completed finally. Took a, uh, that project was, um, took quite a long time from the, um, very start to completion, but now it is totally complete. Uh, the first, uh, agenda item is, uh, requesting authorization to declare the Board of Trustees Lead Agency for the Village of Sufferin Water Meter and Automated Meter Reading System Project and classifying the action as a type-two action pursuit of, to SECR.
So. Want to go to them all, Charles? I'm going to do them all at the end, or want to do them?
Oh.
One at a time?
Um, okay, yeah, yeah, sure. Yeah, it, yeah. Uh, next item is requesting authorization to declare the Board of Trustees Lead Agency, uh, for the Village of Sufferin Well Fields Emergency Generator Project and classifying the action as a type-two action pursuit of SECR. Uh, I think that's, um, I, I think that's a mistake. Uh, hold on a second. I'm reading off of a different, uh, list here.
Yeah, Charles, that, that one, it's classified as an unlisted action, and you're adopting a negative declaration.
Yeah, let me, I'm sorry, I was reading off of a different list. Let me, uh, go back here, and, um, the, the, uh, that second item, let me correct that. Be declaring, um, Board of Trustees Lead Agency for the Village of Sufferin Well Fields Generator Project, clear, classifying the as an unlisted action and adopted a negative pursuit to SECR.
Hey, Terry, is he allowed to read them? Is he allowed to go to them all, and then we can do it as one, as one vote with a roll call vote, Terry?
Well, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to vote on each one separately, so you, it probably makes more sense to vote after he gives you each.
Okay, I'll do each one, okay.
And just so the board understands, um, you know, a lot of actions, most actions the board takes are subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So the first one, with respect to the replacement of the meters, that's, uh, a type-two action, which means it's not subject to SECR, because it's just a replacement in kind of existing, um, uh, meters. The, the second one, with respect to the wellfield generator, um, it unlisted action means that it's, uh, one of the types of actions that's subject to SECR, and based on the environmental assessment form that, uh, Charles prepared, um, you can adopt a negative declaration, meaning that the proposal will not have a significant impact on the environment.
So I'm, I'm going to do them individually then, Terry, okay?
Yeah, it would make more sense, I think.
I'll do it, I'll do it, okay. Um, so I, I could do a roll call vote on all these, except for, do I have to roll call, uh, on the forty-seven eight, Terry? Or can I just do a?
A voice vote, you mean? Yeah, sure.
Voice, okay. All right, so let, let's do the first one, Charles. I'll read off the, since you already went through the first two, Charles, I'll do it now. I'll let you take over, okay? So resolution declared, uh, declared Board of Trustees Lead Agency for Village of Sufferin Water Meter Automated Meter Reading System Project and classifying the action as a type-two action pursuant to SECR. Uh, can I have a motion now, please?
Motion, Hagan.
Motion made by Frank Hagan. Second, please. Second by trustee Corgan. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? I say, motion passed. I'll read the second one, uh, which is letter C. The resolution declared Board of Trustees Lead Agency for the Village of Sufferin Well Fields Generator Project classifying the as an unlisted action and adopting a negative pursuant to SECR. Can, can I get a motion, please?
There's a word left out there, Mike. It should be negative declaration.
Okay, now, okay, negative declaration. Negative declaration pursuant to SECR. Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Motion, Corgan.
Trustee Corgan. Trustee Corgan.
Second, trustee Salomon.
Seconded by trustee Salomon, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion passed. Uh, Charles, you want to take over again, in case you have any questions, you can explain them, you're gonna be on letter D now.
Right, so, um, as the mayor had indicated, uh, on, um, item D, authorizing approval of change order number one with Tilt Town, New York, Inc., for the roadway improvements project phase eleven in the amount of forty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and five cents.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Motion made, trustee Alpert, second, please?
Trustee Salomon.
Seconded by trustee Ashen, trustee Salomon, all in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passed, go ahead, Charles.
Charles, actually, before you continue, can you actually, uh, just share with the board, since this was a change order, what sort of items were covered in the change that we just voted on?
Alright, well, this was something that we discussed, um, on one of the, uh, previous workshops, where, um, this, the, all these paving projects are based on unit cost and estimated quantities, and, um, the original contract, uh, was exceeded by, um, uh, the, the, this dollar amount of forty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and five cents, based on additional, um, square yards of pavement and milling.
So, so it wasn't so much that anything changed, it was maybe there was a miscalculation initially, is that right?
Well, yeah, you always have a little bit, uh, we've been, uh, fairly successful in years past, in always having the, um, the, the actual numbers coming in lower than the, uh, contract amount, and this year, we had a very large, um, contract. Total of, I believe, it was twelve roadways, and, um, we always have a little bit of, uh, change in the, uh, the estimated versus the actual quantities.
Thank you. Appreciate that. You can go on, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, not a problem.
That was all the paving, that was all the paving done in October, correct, Charles?
Yeah, yes, that's right, I was, uh, it all was finished up, uh, during March, October.
And, and it was, and there was grant money involved in that, a lot of this was grant money, am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so, yeah, so what we had there was, we had, um, a portion of the cost was paid as part of the cost sharing agreement with Orange and Rockland, we also had, um, state funds for, from the CHIPS funds that we, uh, the village receives every year, and, um, so that reduced the, um, the actual cost to the village substantially. We also had some, I believe Michael had worked out, um, some of the previous projects that funds were left over, we were able to utilize those as well. So, um, although it was a very large project, um, the overall cost was greatly reduced.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay, next item, yeah, I'm sorry, is there another question?
No, number F, you're on F now.
Okay, alright, so, um, let's see, we're on E.
Oh, no, E, you're on E now, Charles.
Requesting approval of the professional service proposal from Pin-Garwin Deutsch in the amount of forty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars for the design of the emergency generator for the wellfields one, two, and four, it's, uh, it should be four, not three. One, two, and four is the, um, and we had the, um, I believe that was distributed to the board for their review. I know, um, Terry Rice had reviewed the general conditions, he had some comments, and we had those, uh, comments incorporated, and, uh, the, uh, general conditions were modified.
Hey, Charles, if I may, there was one that I emailed you back, that I wasn't satisfied with, uh, the language they put in. I, I don't know if they subsequently changed it or not, um, if they didn't, I would just suggest, I think I put it in the resolution anyway, that the contract is subject to my approval. They had a very limited thing on, uh, provision on liability that really protected them greatly, and, you know, God forbid that they, uh, are negligent in the design or something like that, I don't, I don't want them contractually to eliminate the village's right to whatever remedies they might have.
Now, there, uh, we've done quite a bit of work with them, uh, in, in the last few years, and, uh, they, um, they're, they're very accommodating, and I'm sure we'll get that, uh, obviously it'll be conditional that, uh, that does get corrected.
Okay, good.
Okay, let's see where.
I'm gonna go ahead, Charles, we're gonna have a motion, okay? So, we'll make a motion on his, uh, on his requesting approval of the professional service proposal from Pin-Garwin Deutsch in the amount of forty-seven eight for the design of an emergency generator for wellfields one, two, and four, subject to the approval of the village attorney, Terry Rice, can I have a motion on that, please?
I so move.
Hagan.
So, um, moved by Salomon, seconded by Hagan, moved by Salomon, seconded by Hagan, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion passed. Charles, go ahead, number, letter F, Charles.
Yeah, F, so, uh, the next four is, um, in regards to the, um, Gosher project, uh, grant, which, um, is, um, and Michael could go into greater detail, but there is requirements, although they're very small dollar amounts, um, there is a requirement to have board approval to pay these dollar amounts, so I'm gonna go through them. Um, authorization for payment to Pin-Garwin Deutsch Consulting Engineers PC for application number three in the amount of two hundred and fifty-eight dollars for backup power for a critical facilities project.
Can I have a motion for item F, please?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Motion, Alpert, second?
Second, trustee Salomon.
Trustee Corrigan, seconded by trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion passed. Go ahead, Charles, item G, Charles?
Okay. Uh, authorization for payment to Pin-Garwin Deutsch Consulting Engineers PC for application number four in the amount of nine hundred and eighty dollars for the backup power for a critical facilities project.
Yeah, can I have a motion, please? Item G?
Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, motion?
Second, trustee Salomon.
Seconded by trustee Salomon, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, all opposed? Motion passed. Go ahead, Charles, next one, please?
Yeah, item H, uh, authorization for payment to Pin-Garwin Deutsch Consulting Engineers PC for application number three in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-one dollars for the hardening of water treatment plant project.
Uh, can I get a motion, please, item H?
Motion, trustee Hagan.
Motion made by trustee Hagan, seconded by trustee Alpert, trustee Alpert, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Item I?
Yeah, item I, authorization for payment to Pin-Garwin Deutsch Consulting Engineers PC for application number four in the amount of one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the hardening of the water treatment plant project.
Have a motion for item I, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, seconded by?
Seconded by Hagan.
That's right, seconded by trustee Hagan, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passed. Go ahead, Charles, item J?
Okay, item J, authorization to approve change order number one, two, and three with Cavino and Sons for the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project.
Okay, can I get a motion, is, is that, is that supposed to be one, two, and three, that's the right one, Charles, in that one?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry, just checking, don't mind me, I apologize. Um, item, can I get a motion of item J, please?
Corrigan.
A motion made by trustee Corrigan, second, please?
Second, trustee Salomon.
Seconded by trustee Salomon, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
This question, is there any change in the amount of money I'm asking, Charles?
Uh, that is a change to the contract, we're gonna be utilizing project contingency funds to accommodate that change order, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, just wanted to clarify. Can we just get that right? All, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Next one, Charles, item?
Okay, okay, authorization, uh, for the mayor to appoint Anello Vatianno to a grade twelve MEO two position with a salary of thirty dollars and seventy-eight cents per hour.
I, I just want to point out that, that, that employee, we're not adding anything, he's taken over for another employee who left us and went to another municipality, so he's, he's, he's got approval from the county already, as, uh, uh, I, 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 that's correct, Charles, we already got approval from the county.
Yes, 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 Anello has, uh, has been approved by the county personnel department, and as the mayor had indicated, he's, uh, actually filling a vacant position that was vacated by, um, someone that resigned in December.
Right, so is, there'll be no extra cost to the, to the, to the, okay, so, right, I just want to point out, when you say something like that, you gotta, you gotta know where it's coming from, it's not gonna affect the budget in that, in that sense.
Yeah, yeah, actually, his, uh, his hourly rate would be, uh, substantially less, um, than his predecessor.
Okay, well, we'll keep that in the budget, we need it for the taxpayer, Charles, okay?
Yeah.
Do I get a, do I get a motion?
Can I make a motion, Hagan?
Motion, second, trustee Alpert.
By trustee Hagan, seconded by trustee Alpert, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Do you have a start date for that, Charles?
Oh, yes, um, the start date would be, uh, tomorrow, uh, January fourth.
Wow.
Because, and some, the guy has been out of that position, so has actually been vacant, so, we saved a few dollars there, too, Frankie.
No, is, is, uh, the fact, the fact that, uh, that, that he's filling that role, that he's taking that new position, does that open up a different position in the department?
That's correct. That'll be your next item.
Oh, that's the next item, perfect.
That'll be your next item, okay?
Perfect, thank you for clarification.
Go ahead, Charles, I'll read that, but that's gonna be pursuant to you, that'll be pursuant to him getting his approval from the county, but he'll read that, go ahead, Charles.
Yeah, so, um, next item, authorizing, uh, the mayor to appoint Michael Stewart to a grade ten MEO one position with a salary of twenty-two dollars and ninety-three cents per hour, and this is, uh, this position, uh, would be actually, uh, filling, um, the vacated position by, uh, by Mr. Vatianno, so, uh, we'd be, you know, as a result of being able to, uh, move, um, the, you know, Michael currently is a laborer, be able to move into a MEO one position, he does have a CDL, does qualify, however, um, it would be subject to Rockland County Personnel Approval, and, um, you, you know, he would, um, once that approval does come through, he would then be able to, uh, start that position.
Thank you. Can I get a, can I get a, a motion to resolution number, aye, please?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Motion made by trustee Alpert, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corrigan, all in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Charles, I guess you can go and play with your computer, figure it out now, okay?
Yeah, you'll figure that one out the next time, right?
Okay, now we have the treasurer, Mr. Michael Janito, please, any updates, please, Mr. Janito?
Uh, yes, Mayor, ours is pretty brief, um, we have, the audit is about to be completed, and we should get our audited financial statements this month, uh, January, and that's for the fiscal year ending May thirty-one of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, we also have, uh, been working on several grants, as were mentioned by the Police Department and Fred Rella, uh, together with, uh, a significant amount of money that we're going to be submitting to the Environmental Facilities Corp. for reimbursement, uh, which is partially under a grant, partially under, uh, money that they're lending us at a very, very reasonable rate. So, in, in any event, uh, very busy with a lot of that stuff, including all the year-end things that we would have to do. This includes, uh, not only our W twos and payroll work that we do, but as well the Affordable Care Act reporting, which, by the way, we're one of those municipalities that do all of it in-house. Um, a lot of municipalities go outside to have that ACA reporting done, and it costs several thousand dollars, uh, typically, to get that done, um, by somebody outside, and that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Janito.
Thank you.
Do the trustees have any updates?
Not this month, thank you.
Very good, thank you, hope everyone feels good, uh, okay.
One thing, one thing I'd just like to suggest, I, really, it's more for the public to, to lobby, uh, you know, your New York State representatives, but I don't think there are sufficient, uh, number of testing sites in, uh, this, in Rockland County, basically, uh, there's certainly, and, uh, you know, no walk-in sites, and, uh, the ones where you can make an appointment, it's like you've weeks ahead, you know, by then, you're not gonna be sick, so it's kind of stupid, um, quite frankly, you know, and I've been in touch with, uh, all, all of my state representatives, that would, that would be, uh, our Assemblyman Waller, and our New York State Senator Elijah Reichlin Melnick, and, uh, I, I recommend the public do the same, because through action by the state, we can get more sites here in Rockland County protesting, because right now, as you all know, it's, this stuff is spreading like wildfire, especially the Omicron variant, and I really think that Rockland County is being left out of the state's plans, and we need our representatives to put, uh, you know, get something going on that, so I highly recommend that the public reach out to their New York State representatives on that, thank you.
Uh, I just want to point out, if you notice on our site, uh, we had sent something out from the village that, um, the supervisor of Stony Point, James Monahan, they had set up a site over in that Stony Point, over there for testing, you know, working with the county, so, uh, I, I, I think, um, uh, Kathy, you had sent it out for me, that testing, uh, where the testing site was with the information, if not, I'll send it back out, and we'll blast it on Facebook, and we'll blast it over to village Gmail, okay? But they did open up, I think it opens up tomorrow, you can make appointments for testing, uh, for.
I'll put it on Facebook tonight, Mayor.
Please, and Facebook and too, and, uh, we'll, we'll send out an email, too, I think we had sent it out already, didn't we, but?
Not about those sites, no.
Okay, alright.
We didn't, I know I didn't read anything, so I was pretty sure.
Well, um, okay, I think you had asked me, and I, I'll, I'll check into it, but anyway, it's new, it didn't start yet, so, um, but Jimmy, again, the supervisor of Stony Point was very instrumental in that, and, uh, I have a very good relationship with him, so I will get on the phone with him when I get off this meeting, actually, okay? And, uh, do, do our best to get us first online. Um, I guess, I guess I, um, I guess, as we talked about, I guess the mayor's update, uh, remember I have a, uh, I need a resolution to approve the December sixth, two twenty, uh, two twenty-one Board of Trustees reorganization meeting minutes, can I get a motion for that, please?
I so move, trustee Salomon.
I'm in move, can I get a second, please?
Second, trustee Alpert.
Seconded by trustee Al, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. And approval of December sixth Board of Trustees meeting, that's we got that, right?
Well, did we just approve the reorg meeting, or?
Yeah, reorg, now we're gonna approve the December, December sixth, two twenty-one Board of Trustees meeting minutes. Can I get a, a motion for that, please?
I so move, trustee Salomon.
I'll just have a move, can I get a second, please?
Uh, seconded by Hagan, with one correction on my, the spelling of my name, they had it H-A-G-A-N, just correct it to H-A-G-E-N, that's all I'm asking.
He just wanted to see if you were awake, Frank, that's all.
I'm still here, thank you for testing.
Very good, um, okay, so, uh, my second, uh, can I get all in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, okay, uh, okay, I just want to point out, as we talked about the homeless already, um, I, I've been working with Charles Sawicki and Joe Hunt, they've already put up a couple more garbage cans there. We don't have all that were there, over time, they got damaged, okay? They replaced a, a few of the lights, but that's not the, the lighting, I think the village is dark, because we have businesses that are dark, because they're not open, also, I think that's one of our, one of our faults, if you notice, there's two businesses right now that, that actually put up just the regular for rent signs on, and one was the old HSBC Bank, and one was the old, well, I'm older, the bakery, you know, it's a corner of, uh, of, uh, Lafayette and, and Park there, crumps, correct? So, we need to, uh, I, I'm gonna find out legally if we're allowed to help them advertise to rent them, huh? If we can use our, our websites, our informational things, whatever we can do legally, I'm gonna also request the Chamber of Commerce if they're willing to get involved, to help them, and even ask the residents to help, huh? As long as these business owners don't mind us putting their thing out there, I think the more people, listen, as they say, social media is the. As long as these business owners don't mind us putting their thing out there, I think the more people, listen, as they say, social media is the best way to do anything now. So I'm gonna reach out to, to residents, to, to our, our resources as well as any county sites there may be. So the more we can help these businesses get going, the better we'll, we'll be. As I said, on the lighting, it's gonna be a bigger problem. We're gonna, we're gonna have to work on that together. I sat down with the town of Ramapo in reference to the, the quarry and we had some, some, some good conversations because we may have a mutual concern there, okay? But as I said before, I think that, that, you know, if they, they just respect us and recognize it, we may deserve a piece of the, a piece of the pie for the taxpayers of suffering and I, I think they'll, they're, they're, they were very amicable. I have to say that, okay? We also have on the Nevada site, again, I'm saying it's not just for us, but for the public too. The Nevada site is, is, they're planning on doing a, they big almost like a, I'm not saying it's Amazon, but Amazon style warehouse. So it'll take time, but it would bring, it would help us with our ratables in Suffering and I would, I would, as, as time goes on, we will be very active and helping. Also, there's an Avon project coming forth to us, but as you see with that Gmail report, we have some concerns that we'll have to address. We have a comprehensive plan on our plate, which we're, we're working on to, to, to help this village to, to do better and we will, we will get a date soon which on that, with that, with the next meeting on the comprehensive plan. I'm very happy to have Terry Rice on board with that. He has more knowledge than, than, than most people in this, in this whole county for sure on that and it's something that we all have a right to and the public has a right to interject and give our opinions, all right? Sorry to talk so much. I don't think we have an executive session now, okay? So would, if anyone has any reason to go in executive session? You think? No? Okay. I know, Frank, you might have wanted to talk about your name being spelled wrong again, so I was willing. If not, let's go ahead and, can I get a motion to, during the meeting?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Motion, trustee Alpert, seconded. Passing to trustee Corrigan. All, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passed, meeting closed. Please stay safe. If anyone needs anything, please reach out to me. And Fred, say hello to your wife. Frank, say hello to your wife. Steve, say hello to your wife, okay?
Happy New Year, everybody.
Have a nice night, gentlemen. Be safe.
Mike, good job on the meeting, Mike Janito. Thank you.